Is it charging for electrical outlet or into the computer?
I'm thinking of, I'm not sure about that.
As I say, otherwise, we should just.
Good morning. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Approve the agenda.
So moved.
Any further discussions? All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Betty, will you read the minutes from our last meeting, please?
Uh, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, Chairman Helgaboll called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors' order at nine AM. Members present were Cluse, Rasmussen, and Helgaboll. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen, to table the certified salaries for fiscal year twenty twenty-five until next week. And then the tentative agenda was approved. Motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of June tenth, twenty twenty-four, were read and approved after one correction. Approved claims for payment. Brittany Howison presented the electrical estimates for the Port House lawn project. There were three estimates presented. Howison will be meeting with the City of Clarion soon about the project cost. Each estimate was with and without a fifty amp unit. It was suggested that the payment of this project be split with the county, City of Clarion, and the Clarion Development Alliance. Henneker Construction had stated that they are willing to donate all the twelve fingers regardless of who wins the bid. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen, to approve the payment of one-third of the lowest bid on option A with the infrastructure to bump up to the fifty amps at a later date if needed. Motion carries. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Cluse, to appoint Rick Brooks to the Conservation Board for a five-year term to, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. Motion carries. Peggy Sluton-Hopper, Wright County Treasurer, presented information to assign a county health tax certificate, twenty eleven dash one one five zero nine. Um, again, due to the entire notification process before was not fully completed and too much time had elapsed. Uh, motion by Cluse and seconded by Rasmussen to approve the assignment of tax or certificate two thousand eleven dash one one five zero nine. Motion carries. Eric Rector, Wright County Conservation Director, presented information on a few of the projects intended for the conservation park. Record Rector would like to move from general basic to Conservation Reserve Fund thirty-five thousand dollars for the completion of sewer work at the Conservation Office and Campground area. This was originally budgeted, um, for but did not get completed in this fiscal year. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen, to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one for the inter-fund operating transfers from general basic to the Conservation Reserve Fund. By roll call vote, ayes, cluse, rasmussen, and helgaboll, nays, none. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one duly passes and reads as follows. And there you can see them moving from general basic to the Conservation Reserve of thirty-five thousand. Uh, motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen, to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty on the appropriation of money to various departments for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five by roll call vote, ayes, cluse, rasmussen, and helgaboll, nays, none. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty duly passes and reads as follows. And this is appropriating money to each department as to their max, and this is at the hundred, one hundred percent appropriations. And you can see that, and that will be in the minutes and published. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Cluse, to approve the twenty-eight E agreements for Unified EMS Ambulance Service with the Iowa Specialty Hospital, Franklin General Hospital Ambulance Service, City of Eagle Grove Ambulance Service, Iowa Specialty Hospital Belmont Ambulance Service, um, Renwick Ambulance Service, and the City of Clarion Ambulance Service. Motion carries. This will start July one, twenty twenty-four, and will remain in effect for fifteen years. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen, to approve the twenty-eight E agreement with Humboldt County entailing Wright County to provide environmental health services to Humboldt County. Motion carries. Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer, gave his weekly update on secondary roads. The crews continue to spot blade and reclaiming granular on hard surface routes. They are also weed whipping around the culverts and bridges. The twenty twenty-four rock, scheduled rock granular program is now one hundred percent completed. Also, the C seventy Woolstock Bridge should have the west approach poured by the end of this week and then move to the east side. Yeah, and move then it should be, them should be then, so. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Cluse during the meeting. Motion carries. Just those two typos.
Flames have been around. Open forum for public. Anybody here wish to address the board or online?
Stevens, Community and Family Resources. Uh, good morning. Um, just want a general public, uh, to know that I can help them, uh, with, uh, tobacco policy and tobacco signage, uh, help them update or create a new tobacco signage or policy. Uh, if it doesn't include e-cigarettes currently, um, it probably should. Um, also wanted to talk about, uh, the new legislation, uh, signed in by state, H N two six seven seven B legislation, which is banning most vaping prog- products in the state of Iowa. Um, only things that are approved are the FDA brands, which is twenty-three. Uh, Iowa so far has said, uh, that there's only three brands on there that they are approving. This will go into effect July first. It definitely will affect retailers. Um, I'm not quite sure how it's going to be enforced. Um, I think during audits, when they, uh, bid in for their license, uh, they will go through some type of an audit or, but if they're also going to have law enforcement do spot checks. Uh, but it's kind of a, a big deal, uh, from our side, the prevention side. Um, yeah, I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Can you tell me that legislation again?
It's like, like, late legislation is H N two six seven seven. Uh, Kim Reynolds signed this, uh, May seventeenth, I believe. It will go into effect July first. It's banning probably about ninety-nine percent vaping products and electronic, uh, devices in the state of Iowa. Um, they're saying ultimately they want to only use the FDA-approved ones, um, which is right now is twenty-three brands. Um, Iowa has only approved three of those twenty-three.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, we got a couple of minutes here. Let's get down to item seven, review and act on certified salaries. We tabled that last week. We had a couple of miscalculations. I think they're all in front of you. Uh, pretty much a three percent across the board. We had a few adjustments. I think a couple of the sheriffs are a little bit less just because of, uh, the contract. Is that correct? The jailers?
Motion approved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number eight, review and act on twenty-e agreement with Williams Ambulance Service, Wright ENF Service. I think we missed that last, last week. It's kind of cleaning up on there.
Motion approved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Motion carries. They'll carry the same fifteen years as well.
And there. Guaranteed EMS funds for them will be four thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars.
They don't use all of it either.
And then they, whatever paraded, if they make some calls and rural calls in Wright County, they also get a paration. That hundred fifty thousand dollars gets spread amongst everyone.
Okay, appointment of values account cash for next year. You'll be on Zoom next week, uh, Dean, so.
Oh, yeah, I've found.
I'd make a motion to appoint, uh, Rick and Carl, too.
Okay, and we'll be here around eight o'clock. We'll do treasurer first?
Yes.
I'll second that. Okay, eight o'clock next, uh, next week. You and I will be counting.
A little bit before eight.
A little bit before eight, okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, we gotta do.
I'll be there at six thirty, so if you want to come in.
It's Carl, the one you gotta worry about being here on time.
Peggy, one dear. Wright County Treasurer, do you get an update on U S fish and wildlife?
So Friday, I think it was Friday. I received this in the mail from an attorney in Arizona. The way I read it is they want zero on their ground in, in drainage district.
On passes, but.
Assessments. They don't get anything on taxes now because they're taxing them.
This is on just drainage. She's requesting we put zero.
Well, they want the parcels removed, I believe. From the drainage districts.
So this informational or do we need to act on it?
I have a call in to the attorney. I thought you'd call me back before eight or before I come down here this morning, but I haven't heard from you yet.
To the, to the county attorney or to our drainage attorney?
This attorney.
Okay.
Yeah. Just to clarify what it is.
Oh, you started that. I think your friends.
Not real thrilled to be in my game on it though, but yeah. So, so I, I think they're done playing with that. The fact that it's gone this far.
Okay. So kind of keep us updated on that. See what the attorney says.
Yeah, I mean, I'll read through it and, um, and show it to our drainage attorney also. But my recommendation would be, well, you know what my recommendation would be?
I know. I, I guess, I, I mean, we, we want our citizens to follow our rules, but we're not following the rules either. So it's kind of hard.
Yeah, when rules are, when I have to follow the rules, uh, when I buy a piece of property and I'm part of a drainage district, why should the federal government, when they buy land or given land, not have to follow the same rule that I do?
They are. They are following the code. And the code of Iowa says that we should not be taxing them.
Okay, I'll, again, I'll review.
We're close enough on that. Okay, nine fifteen, Jay, with some good news on insurance, right?
Well, thank you for giving us some time this morning. Um, the committee met June seventeenth last week, uh, reviewed ICAP and IMWCA renewals. Um, we have a few suggestions for you. I sent some, I sent packets to you guys last week. Hopefully you had a chance to take a look at that before the copy of it this morning. Um, really to start off, uh, ICAP is taking a significant increase again this year. You will see that on third page of the packet. Last year, our exciting new premium with ICAP was, uh, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. The renewal this year is three hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. We made up a little bit of ground with IMWCA. The work count continues to perform really well, but, um, with ICAP, it's really property-driven, and you'll see that on there. Um, we do have four million dollars of additional property coverage this year. You know, we increased from thirty-seven four to forty-one four, uh, for overall. The courthouse continues to lead the way on that at fourteen thousand, or fourteen million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. In comparison, in twenty nineteen, it was ten million, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand. So trying to hedge that inflation as we go. Um, from a wind hail deductible, that's really the big topic that we wanted to talk about. I, uh, ICAP now has a two percent wind hail deductible, and it's on the valuation of the property. It has to be an ISO considered cat storm for the two percent to do this. Otherwise, it's still a thousand. So our committee agrees that we should not buy back deductible at a cost of twenty-five thousand dollars. So we should leave it at a thousand. You guys agree?
And when you say I, that means that some weather agency has to say, yes, it hailed here?
Yeah, the insurance, well, not only that it hailed here, but that it's a cap-related storm, so the loss is over a billion.
Okay.
So.
Total loss like in the state or?
Total loss with that particular storm.
Okay.
So if we had a line come through Clarion, Belmont, um, I can't picture when that would happen. It could be over a billion. So one of the charts that I provided for you shows you across the country, last year there were nineteen cat storms based off severe storms. It's the one that's all green. The second chart shows you total cap losses. Last year were twenty-eight in the country. And it'll show you, yes, the majority of those are severe storms, but also includes wildfire, um, hurricane flood. And down there.
So the two percent wind and hail only will trigger if it's one of these storms?
If it's a cat loss. Yep, otherwise we'd fall back to the thousands.
And that is, is there a region that that cat loss, I mean, is it, like, can we do a declaration or a, is, they lump several counties in that or is it?
They can. So, but it would have to be one consistent storm. So the deratio that went through Cedar Rapids and on over to the border, that definitely was a cat loss. Um, if I recall, if you guys can help me on this, the December deratio was not considered a cat. It stayed predominantly rural and didn't create enough damage to be called a cat storm.
Okay.
Well.
Yeah, so.
So you're recommending not buying that, buying it down and just go with what we've got because of the risk of?
Yeah, we can't, the committee can't find a scenario where we really feel that we would have a cat loss. The Greenfield tornado, for example, as devastating as that was, is not a cat loss.
Okay.
So, and we feel that's where really more of our exposure is, right, is hay.
Gotcha, so.
Okay, concerning that, uh, valuation of the courthouse, I see you've got a note on here.
Yeah.
About an outside firm hiring them.
So we have had that on there the last three or four years to talk about that. As our committee sits together, a lot of times we talk about Marshalltown and when the tornado went through there. Um, that courthouse was significantly underinsured. I went to Dean Snyder Construction last year and asked if they could help us create a valuation for it, and they're struggling to do that without considerable resources going into that, um, which I didn't feel was necessarily my cup of tea to tell them that they should do that anyways.
Good.
Um, we, we just really strongly feel if you want this courthouse to look the way it does right now, fifteen million is.
Not gonna do it. And I believe the Marshalltown courthouse, obviously a partial loss in there, about twenty-five or twenty million dollars in expenses. We're under, we're definitely under, under insured on it, but it probably wouldn't be a big.
But it would be, you're saying that the Dean Snyder Associates, they don't just do that out of the goodness of their heart. It would, it would be a expense to the county to do that.
We would, and we would also have to fit their schedule.
Any idea what that cost would be to?
They didn't tell me.
Is there anybody else who does it, you know?
We might have to reach out to smart architectural firms that could do it. They make tough offers, obviously. But I don't know if you want the committee trying to pick that or if the supervisors want to pick that.
I'd like to have the committee. You know who you would deal with, but.
You know more about it than we do, so I'd rather have you guys. Do us a price of what it's going to take to do that, too.
Yeah, I think we should have a ballpark number. What would it cost to replace this thing? So we know how underinsured we are.
That would at least bring us up to the standard at that time.
Yep.
You know, maybe in ten more years, we'd need to do it again.
Yeah, we, I'll give it a try. Betty gave me a flash drive that has as much information as we can find on this building on it, so. They can create an estimate off of that of what it would cost to come on site and actually do it.
Good.
But, yeah, doing it just off paper like that, they're not comfortable putting their name on it either.
And what was Marshall, Marshall? It was a partial loss and how much money?
Twenty-five mil.
I've heard twenty-five, thirty miles.
Yeah.
If, if ours is similar to that, you know, we're fifty percent insured for.
Under a total, I mean, wouldn't we? Then we have to have, then we have to be insured eighty percent of it, though.
So if you had a partial, yes, you do. Um, if we had a partial loss, ICAP in the past has done a good job of working their way through that. Rehearsal, ICAP came through and evaluations on it all. Um, they obviously had a disclaimer with that of, you know, this isn't perfect. This isn't a construction engineer doing this. This is our loss controller representatives doing the best they can. Um, there are so many unique features to this building that it's, our committee still feels it's not close. Um, that's why I also gave you the full packet this year because in the back of this, you'll be able to see the cost by building. So that's the other thing to discuss is if we, if that number, if we're insured the half of the value right now, which could potentially be fair enough. You're paying twenty-four thousand dollars a year to insure the property of the courthouse. So the way ICAP has been getting increases in the insurance industry in general on the property side, we would have to be willing to absorb that, too. So it's, it comes back to the question of do we want it to look the way it does now or are we comfortable with a different style of building? If we have loss.
Eric brought up a question about historical, just no historicals. I don't think it's on the historical register. So you may have federal funds or some sort of historical fund that you're planning to test.
Well, right now, would we, would we, are we going to be penalized right now if you had a loss on this because we're underinsured?
In my opinion, no.
It does.
It's a blanket.
You do. It will still cap it at the per location amount, so the blanket is what affects us on co-insurance.
And it would be through ICAP, and ICAP came and gave us a valuation of the building. That is what I'm.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you're correct.
So, I mean, we're going on the best information that we have, but, but that still doesn't fix the problem when it happens or if it happens, I guess I should say.
Right, and, and that's where our concern is, right, is we just still don't feel that it's accurate.
And when you go to somebody like Snyder and Associates, would they give you a, this is how much it would cost to replace it as it sits today in the historical thing, and this is what it would cost to build a building on that location, but it wouldn't look like your courthouse.
I think they would do that, if, depending on how much the supervisors wanted to pay for the work to be done. Um, yeah, they, they would do what you would ask them to do.
I think something to look into. I wonder too if I think we get some numbers that you could do that, that'd be great.
Yep, we will continue on that.
So I think we never underinsured.
So behind those first two charts, the third chart we put in there because you also see the auto rates, um, continue to be impacted, too, and the news does a really good job of covering property increases. You, USA Today had an article in there about people starting to self-insure homeowners. Um, all of those focuses have been on the property side, but the litigation side is also really going a little bit crazy. So you will see on that in the last ten years, the actual cost of the litigation has doubled. Gone from ten billion in the industry to twenty. And it continues to outpace what they expected to. So as that gap continues to grow, rates will follow suit with that. Well, yeah. So sorry about the bad news. Um, we did, as I mentioned to you, um, outside of deductible buyback from the wind hail standpoint, uh, the committee did also research if we were to increase our building deductible from a thousand to five thousand on all other peril. Uh, the savings on that was two thousand five hundred dollars, and to go from one minute or one thousand to ten thousand, the savings was five. So again, we didn't feel that, that, that made any sense to, to move forward. Um, back to the work comp side, uh, if we were not with IMWCA, after our point five seven mile, which is incredible, by the way, um, your work comp premium would have been ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. But with IMWCA being part of the pool, they allow a longevity discount and a good history discount, which brought the premium down to forty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one.
Wow, hell.
Yeah, that's fantastic. And a point five seven mile will do that for you. The safety committee focuses on that quite a bit, so. Yes, it's, it's been a good thing.
That softens the will on the other side.
It does. I, I wish there was more we could do on that side. Um, the committee has talked as well. In Iowa, there really were three players or counties, municipalities, um, governmental entities, and those are really ICAP, Selective, and EMC. Selective, uh, quit quoting this year any of those entities because they just found that they weren't competitive and they were spending a lot of resources, time to try and create those quotes. EMC, uh, has not been as competitive as ICAP, but the committee has talked about sending them information this next year to see what that would look like next July.
Okay.
I don't personally think it'll be competitive with ICAP, but we can certainly find out. Claims-wise, the county had a really good year. Um, you know, last year we had seventeen auto claims. This year you have one. So a really good step forward there. And several liability continues to be included in ICAP package in the years past. Uh, we've always had a line item for that, but they have reinsurance has allowed them to combine that in there. You guys have any questions?
No, I appreciate the work you've done. It's just, it's, yeah, we can't shoot the messenger.
Well, and everybody's insurance is going well.
We also wanted to thank Betty for all the years of help that she has given us, and she's worked seamlessly with our agency and then also with the, with the committee on gathering the information, sifting through it, helping provide a little bit of perspective on what you guys would want to see. So we're certainly going to miss that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
So when I do the math, I'm looking at like a fourteen point five percent increase.
Correct.
Uh, it gets tougher to budget that when you're limited at, uh, two to three percent growth in the, by the state legislature.
We understand that that's certainly creating challenges. Um, that's, again, why we started to look for higher deductibles, um, creative ways to make this more competitive. Um, we really feel if we do that, we're going to work in the wrong direction.
And then, uh, you got the marching orders to go kind of figure out what the best avenue is for an estimate on the courthouse. Get with us on that.
Yep. For the plan, okay, should be back, be back in July if that's okay.
No, that'd be great. You should kind of give it to them. Okay, moving down to item ten, review and act on resolution twenty twenty-four twenty-two, inter-fund operating transfer for two twenty, two thousand twenty-four twenty-five this year. I think you all have a copy of it.
Moving, uh, money from rural basic and general business to secondary roads and the general basic and general supplemental to public health, basic and public health supplement.
Yeah, correct. And this is, uh, so that when we start the new fiscal year, that we, yeah, we're rolling and we can cover some of that. Um, you will see that, uh, through budgeting, you budget. Yeah, we're rolling and we can cover some of that. Um, you will see that uh through budgeting, you budgeted um four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars total to our public health. Um, this year we only transferred three hundred thousand, so, um, and hopefully it'll stay at that or less, so.
Yes.
And so this, this is to not exceed the filing amount, so.
Okay, you do have a motion.
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Rick, how do you vote?
Hi.
Dean?
Hi.
Chair votes I, motion is carried. Okay, item eleven, review and act on a resolution twenty twenty-four twenty-three, interfund operating transfer, general basic to capital projects.
That's me.
That's you, Andy.
I'll give you with you every year, I'd like transfer eighty-five thousand from what I've left over in my budget to capital projects to cover the lobby and manhood for next year.
Any other things that may come up?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three, uh, resolution for interfund operating transfer from general basic to capital projects.
Sorry, Dan. Any further discussion? Dean, how do you vote?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Chair votes I, motion carries. Adam. White County Engineer, uh, consider funding agreement with VROSC zero nine nine one oh five dash five F dash nine nine.
Yeah, so it actually should have been. So this bridge is on Victor Avenue, um, just north of Rowan, it's uh on the gravel, first bridge you see. Um, Marcus is uh working through, we've got the um project development going uh through our phases right now, so I just need approval to create um an agreement with the a federal aid agreement to get reimbursed for this project. So we have a estimated total cost right now, construction of five hundred thousand, and so we're looking at a culvert. Let's be put in there.
Excellent. And us doing it ourselves?
Nope, no, this will be under contract because it's over the threshold.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussions? All the papers say hi.
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'll get the dates.
Uh, so next item is just the update, um, our blades are outblading when they can, uh, level B work, uh, we're, the guys are out hauling um, new gravel out, so they're leveling the gravel when they need to, uh, we do have in culverts and bridges, uh, where needed, we uh did have um a gentleman run into some old parsnip. Um, he got some blisters on his arm, so that was one of the things that, um, so we put in, uh, we put in an order for some arm sleeves. Just like removal arm sleeves for the guys when they're doing that type of stuff that's cut resistant, so maybe prevent that in the future, hopefully, so. Um, they'll have to take them off and wash them right away because that's the oil that gets on. They don't want to put them back on after not washing them, but they can wash them and hang them up real quick, so. Um, trucks were hauling the granite program like they switched over to the gravel program. Our granite program, uh, we're at eight point two uh percent on the gravel, rock is done, uh, as I reported last week, ten out of one twenty-two on the gravel. Um, seven work orders were completed, um, we did try uh a little bit different, um, I think it's down south of uh work order sixty, sixty-seven, forty-one, South Eden Grove, we tried a one inch roadstone, um, just to see if that's gonna help out with any of the ravelling or any of the bigs that are staying on the top. Um, so we'll watch that one and, and see, um, we weren't too impressed when it got a little rain on it, it got a little slimy. Um, but that, it had not been bladed yet, so we'll take, take a watch of it. Uh, Woolstock Bridge, the west end is uh completed, uh, the concrete's completed, um, they're moving over to the east end this week, today. Um, they're gonna work essentially everything from the west end though, so because they can, um, within a day and a half, they had concrete uh maturity on the, the approach, so when they pour any concrete, it's gonna come from the west.
Nice.
Still, so they don't have to worry about the railroad as much, um, they'll still have to um do their, anybody who goes down there will have to do their safety briefing with the railroad um, before going on site, so. Um, mowing, uh, we started mowing uh for the fourth of July, uh, we're using the disc mowers because uh one of the shulte mowers is down, it's gonna take some heavy repair, so it's not gonna be as wide as what we've seen in the past, but those short, those disc mowers are nine or ten foot wide, so we'll try to get down as far as you can, so.
Okay.
So I have.
The, the shulte is the arm, right?
Shulte's got the, the, the bat wing that we can actually push down in the ditch and get fifteen feet, so one of them is gonna take some uh heavy duty welding. To get, so we didn't really know, putting the other one out, um, and then making it not kind of symmetrical throughout the county, if one goes down one side and one goes down the other, so we just said, uh, we're gonna put the disc mowers out and then, um, uh, we'll go right to the garlands and do that afterwards, so.
But, and if, oh, in this next week, you can get guys come up and Industrial Park around the sign.
Yeah, yeah. We're calling it last week.
Okay, cool.
So we can get that lead book for you.
Perfect, sounds good, thank you. Any meetings, old or new business, gentlemen?
I've got uh, I've got no renter tomorrow afternoon.
I've got uh building families this afternoon, um, IDDA meeting up in Emmett County. Um, on Wednesday, Midas on Wednesday afternoon. And uh, Blue River Watershed on Thursday afternoon and then Thursday evening CFR.
We have a public health on Wednesday. It's Wednesday, we were switched from Tuesday to Wednesday.
That'll be net, it's opioid reduction tomorrow morning.
Okay, tomorrow.
Yep. And then it's just information.
Okay.
Seven, eight AM.
Anything else for the board? Not, I've undertaken motions of adjournments.
So moved.
Second.
All the paper?
Hi.
We are adjourned.